Well, I call our meeting to order. First item of business is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Rosman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. I'd like to welcome legislators here tonight and all of you. We, I think I'll let the legislators introduce themselves. They do better than we can. How about that, Noel? You want to start?
Okay. Hi. I'm Noel Campbell, State Representative for District One.
Karen Phan, State Representative for District One.
Thank you. Okay, legislative priorities, legislators, priorities for next session. Who wants to start?
Um, I have a couple of priorities.
Most of you know, at least I hope you do, that I live in Prescott and we there in that city have a tremendous problem with these drug rehabilitation homes. They've saturated our city and caused numerous problems with the neighbors and the quality of life in our city. A year ago, my freshman year, my first session, I ran a bill to bring these sober living homes under state licensing. I got that bill out of the House, but it failed in the Senate. And I promised the voters of my district that I would, every year I was down there, I would work on this issue because this is a very important issue to the residents of Prescott. And the problem is, is it's expanding. It's expanding into other cities. Chandler has the problem. Mesa has this problem. These homes are popping up in Scottsdale and to some extent they are in the county. Not at a great number, but there are a few that we know of. I am presently going to drop a bill Monday that deals with not licensing these homes, but changing Arizona revised statutes under the Enabling Act that gives the state gives power to the cities and the counties to perform certain functions. And this bill will allow the counties and the cities, if they so choose, to register these homes, have health and safety inspections, and have a training program for the house monitor. That's not all that the cities or the counties could do, but it is a beginning that will allow the cities and the counties, if they so choose, to get a handle on these sober living homes. And these sober living homes have to have a direct connection to a licensed care facility. A private home where a person is receiving healthcare, medical for substance abuse is not covered and is exempted. A sober living home that has a contract with the county or state organization such as probation is not covered. We're only dealing with those homes where 25% of the members of that household are going to a licensed treatment facility. And as such, we need to know if they're receiving the services that they say they are giving. We don't know that right now. We know nothing about this industry, except that it's proliferated all over our city. The second thing I've been working on, and I've been working on closely with Representative Phan, is the public safety retirement system. This situation has got to be dealt with this year. And I think we're close to reaching an agreement between the police officers and firefighters unions of this state and the taxpayers about how we can get this retirement fund in a much better situation. Right now, the retirement fund for all of these pensioners is at about 47%, which means we only have 47 cents to pay for every dollar we owe in retirement. Our city of Prescott is $72 million in debt. Prescott Valley is in a much better situation because they have a younger force. This all has to do with retirement actuary studies. But if we don't get a handle on this, cities like Prescott and Flagstaff are so far underwater that they'll never be able to pay their pension obligations. So this has got to be dealt with, and we're hoping that a bill, we think we're close to an agreement. We think a bill will be presented to the governor this month that he can sign so that we can have a special election in May to revise the Arizona Constitution. It's a complex piece of legislation, but it has to be dealt with. It's not an easy piece, and we're doing the very best we can at the legislature to get this up before the voters in short time. The third thing that I'm working on is, you know, we passed the K-12 education bill. We're going to get $3.5 billion into K-12 education over the next 10 years. Wherever you stand on this, this bill, from my perspective, it is a good thing for education because the money's going to get right into the system. Maybe it's not all the money that they, the educators thought they needed, but it is tangible money coming into the system. And the state, for its part, was relieved of the obligation to have to deal with this lawsuit that would cause the state legislature to basically bankrupt the state trying to pay the back payments that were missed for five years. More than happy to talk with anybody individually about this, but that, that is a major accomplishment for the legislature and the governor and the education, because, education advocates, because we came together and got this agreement done. And part of the education thing that's not done yet and which I fully support is more funding for the J-Teds. We have the great campus out there at the airport. That is an education program that actually works. 98% of those kids who go there graduate. To go to that technical training, you have to volunteer. It is a win-win program, but unfortunately, the program has been cut $30 million, and we're going to try to restore, if not all of it, we're going to make efforts to restore funding for J-Teds. And I think that that is pretty consistent throughout the legislature, at least with the Republican members. So I'm looking forward to working on that. And the last thing I just want to say briefly is, I'm on the Transportation Committee. We have got to start getting revenue to fix our federal interstate highways and our state roads. Every dollar we put into transportation will bring us at least $3 in economic development. I personally went to five transportation meetings this year all over the state. Nogales, Flagstaff, Safford, Kingman, Casa Grande, and Yuma. Everyone knows the road situation, and we need to get revenue to it. It's how we're going to do that. And we know the problems, but let's give you a perfect example is the I-17. Now, I'm sure you've all driven the I-17. You know how dangerous that, that interstate is. We have no money to fix that. So we have to come up with some, some innovative ideas on how to get revenue. And I'm looking forward to working with Representative Phan and Senator Pierce and any legislator, because it's nonpartisan. The government is tasked to do certain things, and one of them is transportation and infrastructure. We need to pay for this because it's a, gives us a big payback. So that's another issue that I want to work on. So thank you very much.
He did a pretty good job, didn't he? So much for being the freshman. Actually, he's not. And actually, I could probably say ditto about all those. Obviously, Noel and I are both on the Transportation Committee, and obviously with my personal background, her funds, restoration of her funds is huge issue, so we are going to work on that. J-TED, he mentioned. I'm dropping a bill next week that will hopefully restore the J-TED funding. Senator Shooter is dropping one over in the Senate, and I'm dropping the mayor bill over in the House, so we're going to try and get that done as quickly as possible. As I do every year, I am running my no texting for teenage drivers again. This will be my fifth year I'm going to run it, and I'm going to run it every year until it gets passed. I get it out of the House. I know I've got the votes to get it out of the Senate, but when you have somebody that controls what bills get heard and don't, that doesn't like it, it goes in a drawer. So I will be running for the Senate, because Steve Pierce has turned out, so I'm running for the Senate. So the person that's been holding up my bill, he's going to need me now for certain things, so maybe I'll get it done now. The other thing is, as I do every year, I'm doing some more workman's comp reforms and unemployment reform bills. Every year, I just wheedle away at some of the problems we have in that area, so we've made great strides on that one. Last year, my big signature bill was the Rideshare. I'm sure you guys all heard, you know, the Uber Lyft. That took hundreds and hundreds of hours to get that done, but we got it done, passed it, and now actually our Arizona laws is now be, are now being used as model legislation in other states. So it was well worth all the hard work we put in because it really came to a consensus with all the people. You, you'd think it would be a relatively easy thing. It wasn't. Taxi drivers, limos, shuttle service, insurance companies, weights and measures, everybody was involved. It was pretty, pretty hairy, but we got it done. This year, my signature bill is a, it's an economic development bill that I'm working on with the governor's office. I'm not allowed to go into details until after Monday, but it's going to be a really, really good one because, as we were talking a little earlier, I, I love working with this governor. Governor Ducey is, he gets things done. He knows how to delegate. He knows how to get good people in line. He has done a lot for the state already with the K through 12 education funding. We are getting back in the black again, getting rid of all that red ink that was on the books. The revenues are starting to come up, which means that we can pay off those credit cards, if you will, and start getting this money back into things like education and HERF and infrastructure. I know that he's also, can't wait to see when his budget, because I, I happen to like steak parks a lot as well, and I'm getting these little tweets about Karen, wait till you, to wait till you see what the governor has in there for some of the things that you want. So I can't wait, but I don't know what they are yet. So there's a lot of, a lot of good things. This year, I'm going to take it easy. I'm only going to do about 12 bills. I normally do 26, but because I have a couple of big, heavy lift ones, I want to, I want to keep, you know, keep some time free to be able to do that. And as a segue, because I will turn it over to you, because I know what's coming up next, there's going to be some things that are coming up that is going to take my time and Noel's time to fight, just like the TPT problems that we had. It took a lot of time to get that fixed before all of our rural communities got the short end. And I know that there's some things coming up this year that's going to take, take some time just to try and fight for, for our cities and towns on. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Larry, you got a comment?
Just some comments, and if you want to go forward with the individual items.
Laura, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make one comment. I am so excited about the education funding, but in particular, J-TED. I don't know if it's occurred to people, but pretty soon we aren't going to have enough plumbers, we aren't going to have enough electricians, we aren't going to have enough welders, and by golly, they better be paying attention to it. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments, questions? If not, let's just move on to B, is a census and also state shared revenue discussion. First of all, let's take the census. I think that's, we're looking at mid-decade and hopefully adjusting census from here on to the, to the, to the next decade. Ms. Karen?
I know that the vast majority of the other municipalities, as you know, because you see me there every year, I go to the League of Cities and Towns Conference so that I can, I always get there the first day so I can listen to the resolutions and, and the comments. And so I know that that's a big agenda item for the cities and towns. So I, I think it's a positive thing, and I will be supporting it personally.
Appreciate that. We, we're growing fast, and we need it. Noel?
Mayor, I didn't really quite understand the question. I mean, how to, would you phrase that again?
Well, I hope, I'm hoping that that's going to be on your list of things to accomplish, is to adjust census. And if we can adjust it. You want to take the microphone and explain that, Karen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
If I could. The League of Cities will be approaching legislators to have it dropped very soon, meaning like Monday or Tuesday, to go ahead and update the way that we adjust state shared revenues. And there's been a working group, and we've been involved with that as well, as it relates to either paying the United States Census Bureau to come in. It would have cost us right about $1 million to have them do a mid-decadal census for Prescott Valley. We have all collectively figured that the best way to do it will use the U.S. Census Bureau's annual updates. In addition to that, we're talking about wanting to reallocate based on population projections every year instead of every five years. And very interestingly, that came, that suggestion came to the work group from Sierra Vista. Their manager said, you know, instead of waiting five years and then I fall off a cliff every five years because they're losing population, therefore they're losing money. She said, I would rather lose a little bit every year instead of falling off the cliff every five years. And so there's, there's a number of those elements in there, and it's, it's important that that be considered by the legislature very early on in the session so we can put the mechanisms in place to have a reallocation or a recutting of the pie by July 1. So anyway, it's important. And I think all the cities are in agreement now.
We, for us, it's very important. We keep growing. Any other comments or questions, council, anybody? Noel, you had a comment?
No, I just asked Representative Phan if somebody was carrying that bill.
I don't know who is. I know that the, the league has worked on it, and they were lining up a sponsor for that. So you'll be, you'll be seeing it. If you haven't heard about it, you'll be hearing a lot about it here very soon. And Mr. Mayor, I, I know that Richard Parker needs to leave, but he had a comment for Noel as it relates to the group homes and the separation and things like that. And I think he wanted to come up and comment on that, because that is becoming an issue on our horizon, although it's, it's already an issue in Prescott.
What's the deal? He never comments. Richard?
It seems to egg me on quite a bit. It is important. We support, at least the staff supports, your, your bill because we are seeing that overflow into Prescott Valley. And I know that the mayor has been approached by somebody because we have looked to the state agencies to administer standards that are in state law, and they choose not to. And I've approached with our attorney, and he's hesitant for us to, in lieu of the state have separation requirements, we would impose those same separation requirements that are set out in state law. He believes we don't have the authority to do it. The clarification that your bill would, would provide in the legislation is that we do have the ability to adopt those standards, so we support that activity wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much. Give it my best effort down there.
Any other comments, questions? Let's move on to state shared, shared revenue discussion and C as preservation of state shared revenues. I think that, that goes together.
That, that particular item, Mr. Mayor, and for Karen and Noel, we just want to remind you, as we do every year, that we would really appreciate it if you would not allow the state legislature to dig into state shared revenues. We feel, you know, pretty strongly about that. And we want to thank you. You have both been advocates and champions for cities and towns around the state. You have been recognized for being champions for cities and towns, and we really do appreciate that. So we just want to applaud your good work in that respect. We also would ask that you continue to pass on to your colleagues. It's a bad thing to rob from cities and towns. Don't do that. And the sooner you're able to fully restore funding to DPS from the state general fund so that we get our HERF dollars back in the tune of what, a hundred million a year or whatever it is, funding DPS, we would really like to use that for our streets as well. So thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Any comments, Karen? Use your microphone. That's a given. Okay. I think the, I think that's an item that's voted on years and years ago, put into the Constitution. Okay, preservation of state shared revenues. We'll move on to tax code revisions, and this one here is another one that's very frustrating. For some idiot reason, our prior governor made a brilliant statement that our TPT is a, an accountant's dream and a contractor's nightmare. And I, and I've done hundreds of returns. I could not imagine it being that difficult, but what's your comments on that? I understand that there's a gentleman from Litch, Litchfield Park, I believe it is, representative, that wants to make some changes on another issue. We'll get to that. This regarding TPT for rental tax.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about. That's an interesting one. But the construction sales tax, actually, there's a representative out of Mojave County that was going to bring up the construction sales tax again. She's a freshman, and she had some contractors, constituent contractors complaining to her that they want to go to just straight sales tax retail, because it is screwy right now. We were able to fix a chunk of it for the big construction, the new construction, which saved our dollars in rural Arizona. But that whole negotiation they did about the remodeling and the, all that, you know, the formula and things like that, really is a mess for the contractors. So this legislator happened to mention to me that she was going to come in, she was going to drop a bill and so that all construction sales tax was just point of sale, make it real easy. And I said, you don't want to do that. I said, you are a freshman legislator. You, you were not here for the bloodbath that we have had for three years over this because, and I filled her in, and she goes, well, it's for constituents. And I said, trust me. I said, you are going to make a lot of enemies. Is it not perfect? I said, yes, it does need to be tweaked, but they don't even have the portal finished at the Department of Revenue. They haven't even done half the stuff that was supposed to be done. So to try and monkey with it right now is certainly not a good idea. Can it use some improvements? Yeah, let's go back to the way it was. But anyway, so I do know that there are some other influential people that are going to go talk to her and suggest to her that she should not drop that bill, and so we don't have to go through that mess this year.
This sales, or TPT issue is clearly an issue where they, the more they simplify it, the harder it gets. Royally screwed it up, and the answer would be to restore it back to the way it was.
Well, and what I tried to explain to Governor Brewer when she was, this was her signature bill, and, you know, what they were doing is they were comparing our construction sales tax codes to most of the other states around the, around the nation. And most of the states, many of the states do do point of sale. But that's the way it was set up from day one in Granddaddy's Day. So when towns grew and incorporated and formulated and everything else, their whole budgets and structures were based on the economic development and the tax codes as it was, so they could adjust accordingly. And I tried to explain to the governor that because you're, you're literally going to rip the rug out from under rural Arizona communities. And I said, you will bankrupt the smaller ones without a doubt. I can, I'll bet you vodka martini on that right now. And I said, it's just, you can't do that to them unless you want to figure out a way to come up with the difference under state shared revenues. If you're going to take $1 million away from Prescott Valley, or $5 million, or whatever it is, then you better find a way to compensate them from increased state share. Oh, well, we can't do that. And I said, then don't do this. So that's how we were able to get some of this done. Stopped, I should say.
Karen, the only thing I can say about that is, you've been on our side for what, eight years now, and been really, really a good legislator. We appreciate that. I know you're training Noel to be a good legislator, too. If he, if you don't get him trained, let me know.
He's doing great, but I will tell you, and Noel is an exception because he's doing very well, but I firmly believe that the best legislators down there are the ones that have served on a local level as a mayor or a council person or somebody that understands the local issues. They understand because I get so frustrated with some of our state legislators who think that they should have the power and the authority to step on our cities and towns. They just don't get it. And I, I, I really love working with the people down there who has, who have served as mayor and council people because, and supervisors, because they understand local government.
Glad there's more, several people like yourself. Noel?
Well, I don't sit on the Appropriations Committee, and I don't, tax matters don't generally come, but when they do, I get together with Karen and kind of follow her lead on this, because the first year down there, this was a whole new issue to me. But, you know, whatever we can do to protect the cities and rural areas, and I'm going to be for as a general proposition. So, and, and I'll be the first one to tell you, there's so many issues that come before us down there. You have to compartmentalize. You have to become a specialist in certain fields. And, you know, my background is military and law enforcement and firefighting, and those are the areas that I really specialize in in the committees I'm on. Transportation, it's not rocket science to understand the need for roads and highways. It's just a matter of how do we get the revenue and how do we, we get that passed. When it comes to tax matters and appropriations, you know, I listen as best I can, and then I rely on people that I trust for advice on, on which way to go on an issue like this. And this particular issue, I defer to Karen and Steve as far as what we can do to help on this, you know, changing this code prop, a problem where they, they take the revenue down to Phoenix and then give it back to us. So.
The strange thing is that from the House, we saw a lot of pretty good bills come. There were some dumb ones, too. The legis, the Senate side of it had a lot more idiotic stuff that came across. I couldn't understand that. Maybe they have fewer mayors and council people in the, in the Senate.
They do. They don't have any that I know of. The segue on that one is the legislator from Litchfield Park that you brought up. I know it's not necessarily right there, but it's part of the discussion. Yes, Representative Mitchell came to me a couple of weeks ago when I was down there and said that he, he did this last year. He dropped a bill that would not allow any municipalities to collect a rental tax. So rental on your apartments, rental on the houses, the rental tax. And of course, I totally came unglued on that one and started rallying the troops, and he got so much flak from that. And again, I, not only do I not like the fact that he's stepping on local control, but again, I was worried about rural communities. You know, I, he, these legislators that are from Maricopa County, much less never serve locally, they don't understand what goes on out here. They, you know, they think of everything as down there in Maricopa where they've got all these big box stores and Maricopa County gas, extra gas tax money and all the stuff they have going on out there that their, their volume of revenue is so much more than what we have. So last year, he was getting, he, we were given so much flak that he pulled the bill because there was no way it was going to do it. But anyway, a couple of weeks ago, he was down there, and he came in and he said, I'm going to drop the bill, the rental tax bill again, do it way, and I, so I opened my mouth. He goes, wait, wait, wait. He says, but it's, it's going to be for only those with populations over 100,000. Because he said, I don't want to get into the argument with you. So he said, so my bill is going to say over 100,000. I said, you know, Darren, I appreciate that on behalf of my rural communities under 100, 100,000, but I think you kind of missed the point here. It is the issue of local control. You do not, you should not have the right to go in and tell municipalities how to run their municipalities. That is for the voters to decide. They work with their councils, they vote their councils in, and they decide what services they want, how many services they want, and how they want to pay for them. So, I think the battle's going to be there, but just heads up, he did put 100,000 population there."
I think that's planting the seed to eventually drop it on everybody else. I, he has no business trying to micromanage cities and towns. I don't care if they're big ones or little ones, so tell him if he pushes through, I'm going to personally come down there and kick his butt. Any other comments on this?
Laura will come with you.
Laura will come with me. She...
Yeah, I voted against that, too. Never got to where that was going to pass, but it was a real detriment, because Cottonwood and Prescott, they get so much of their revenue off of their bed tax, and it's very important. And so, his philosophy was eliminate taxes. That's all he could, his mantra. Well, that only goes so far. And so, that bill died the way it should have died.
Yeah, I'm glad you took that position. If he wants to eliminate taxes, do it at the state level. Forget micromanaging cities and towns. And I appreciate your stand, and both of you. You've done a good job, and we really appreciate that. Any questions, council? Anyone?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I do appreciate the support we get from our legislators, and I'd hate to think where we'd be if we didn't have your support. One thing I did want to bring up relative to the construction sales tax, it sounds like it's not going to be like it used to be. It's going to be some sort of different animal once the legislature's through, I guess, tweaking it, I guess. And I just wanted to confirm that. The other was, I think I was taken back and disappointed that we were, I guess, billed eighty-some-odd thousand dollars for the operation of this program, which I thought was just an additional, I guess, tax on us to ensure that they can operate that system in a way they feel it should be. But do you foresee, is that something that'll be an annual assessment against cities and towns? Do you know?
So, I haven't seen anything about that yet. I mean, you know, there's probably 2,000 folders pulled, which are potential bills, and thank God, only maybe 200 of them actually get passed. So, there's a lot of crazy stuff that's pushed out down there. But, you know, my first loyalty as a representative is to my district and the economy of this district and the cities. And then the next test, is it good for the people of Arizona? And that's how I kind of, because I'm not an expert in tax matters at all, but I don't want to put an undue burden on our business people here, you know, making it more difficult for them to do business. So, that's just my philosophy.
When Governor Brewer implemented that fee under that, it was under the guise of supposedly, not that I agree with this, but her reasoning was, is that if everybody was streamlining through the state, through the Department of Revenue portal, then, and they were, the state was actually doing all this, the tax collecting, if you will, then the municipalities would all have to get rid of at least one position, if not more, if you're not collecting the local taxes anymore. So, that's how they justify charging the municipalities that price, is because you're already paying for it through employees, and now you don't need those employees because the state's going to do it. As I said, I don't agree with it, because I didn't agree with it anyway, because it's stepping on local control. Nobody knows your businesses and your tax base like you do. You know, when I was the vice mayor of Prescott years ago, or the mayor of Chino Valley, there would be problems that would come up, and that would do with state tax issues. They're so busy down there, they're, it's, you know, it gets lost in the rabbit hole down there. But we Prescottonians, we Prescott Valley people, we Chino Valley, we know the businesses that are there, and who should be there, and who isn't, and who we're getting the sales tax from, and who's not paying their sales tax. And we're on it like that because we know. It gets lost in the shuffle down in the state. So, I would like, that's part of what I would like to see reversed back to local control, personally.
I think you're right on, Karen. I think Governor Brewer was, in general, a pretty good governor. This was one area where she totally screwed up. Laura?
Do you see any chance of ever getting that reversed? Do you, do you think we can ever get that reversed?
The whole thing? No, not the whole thing.
No, I don't either.
Not the whole thing. Now, remember, not to rehash everything we've done for the last three years, but just remember that, on one hand, I admire the fact that she was trying to fix a problem, but sometimes when you try and fix a problem, you create many more. The problem that she was trying to fix, and this I agree with, that needed to be fixed, is what we call service contractors. So, if you imagine the contractors in Maricopa County, for example, and HVAC, you know, heating, air conditioning, you know, hot water, whatever, businesses down there, and they've got 20 trucks and 20 drivers, and every day, those service guys are going to Glendale and Mesa and Tempe, and they're going all over the place. And every one of them has different sales tax. So, they're, they show up, they fix your washing machine, they're filling out the bill for the consumer, and they're like going, "Wait a minute, what town am I in? You know, did I cross the border? Am I in Phoenix?" And they're constantly having to try and figure out. Well, then, you can imagine, at the end of the month, their accounting procedures were a nightmare, because they have thousands of tickets from all different. And that's what, it started out as fixing that problem. And that was the right thing to do. Service contractors never should have been part of construction sales tax in my book. You know, they are a service contractor. So, I think we should have just fixed that and left that alone, and leave all the rest of the construction contract. And that's what I would like to see go back to, let the service contractors do their thing, and, and they just have a flat tax, and, well, actually, it's, they just pay tax on the materials of where they buy it out. So... Sorry, I can't talk anymore.
Anything to add to that? I think you're both right on. I think you're... Any other questions, comments? Marty? No? Okay, if there's no further discussion on sales tax and construction sales tax, move on to PSPRS. And Noel mentioned that to begin with.
I got involved in this because I'm a former law enforcement officer and a former firefighter. I fought for, tank, I was a tanker pilot for 10 years. And I, as a law enforcement officer and a firefighter, it's hazardous work. And so, I've always come at this from the position that these individuals who lay their life on the line for us, and who risk their personal health and safety, deserve a decent retirement. And when we have retirement for our schoolteachers, we have different retirements for different employees. So, that was never an issue of trying to take away anybody's retirement. But over the years, the retirement system really became skewed. Individuals were allowed to work overtime their last three years and pad up their retirement benefits. And in a lot of respects, the cities and the counties and the fire districts, or the people who have contracts with, for retirement, were as much at fault as the employees. They let the system get out of hand. And then, with the economic downturn and the bad investments in the retirement fund, it caused a situation where the retirement fund can only pay presently $48, $47 for every $100 owed. And so, that has led to this crisis in the retirement system for our PSPRS, Personnel Safety Retirement System. So, they had to be changed, and concessions had to be made. And so, I looked at Karen. Karen was going to run this from the House, and she was going to come up with solutions that we could agree to that would save the retirement fund. She was not given that position, and she can talk about that. And I had to look around and find out, who can get, who can I get in on this committee? And those of you who know me, I'm a pretty hard-headed guy. I just started going to the meetings. I attended every meeting I could on this retirement system. I learned everything I could about this retirement system. And we have these great companies who are not associated with the government, or the firefighters, or the police officers. They're actuary companies. They look at the retirement systems. They, they deal all over the United States. And they came up with recommendations on how to save the fund. And I'm here to tell you that it's going to take at least 18 to 20 years to get this thing leveled. It's not going to happen overnight, but we're going to stop the hemorrhaging. And the way we stop the hemorrhaging is we make, the firefighters and law enforcement officers make big concessions, concessions such as their cost of living adjustment. That's been eliminated. They're going to work longer. They're going to retire later. They're going to contribute more money to the fund. All of these things are being agreed to as we sit here tonight. So, there's a great emphasis to come to an agreement. And you might ask, "Well, why would the firefighters and the police officers want to come to an agreement?" Because these organizations have contracts with the cities. The city of Prescott right now is $72 million in debt to their pension fund, and so to their firefighters and their police officers. That's unsustainable. That $72 million could go to $126 million over the next 10 years, because the city doesn't have the revenue to keep pushing in. They have to make quarterly payments to the retirement system. So, these meetings and this consensus, we're going to have to change the state constitution because retirement benefits are protected for law enforcement and firefighters. In, I think it's Article 29 of the state constitution, that says that their retirements will not be diminished or reduced. That's in the state constitution. How it got in there, I have no idea, but we're going to try to change that. We're going to modify that so that their retirement will not be diminished or reduced, except by the bill we're going to pass. We're going to pass a House and Senate bill that's contingent upon being accepted by the voters in a special election. And we hope to have this special election in May. But we're running short, because we're not there yet. We're not there on the agreement. But the agreement is big. It's, it gives a lot of concession from the law enforcement and firefighters. They're not happy with it, but they realize that if they don't agree to this modification, that our cities could go bankrupt. And believe me, if the city of Prescott were to go bankrupt, the courts would step in, and they would deal with the pension obligations for the firefighters and police officers. They do not want that. They want to deal with the city if all possible, and the counties if all possible. So, I have, like I said, I've been to every meeting. I've, I can talk pretty good in detail about the actuary studies. It's going to take 20 years to build this fund up to 80%. 80% is the minimum it should be. Right now, we're at 47%. At one time, believe it, before the economic crunch and the bad investments were made, the fund was at 113%. So, sure, they were paying COLAs out, and it was gravy train, you know? You got the money, and so the handouts were there. But when this thing went belly up, all that had to stop, except the COLAs kept happening. These firefighters and law enforcements were getting 4% COLAs every year, even during the economic downtime. And that's a special caveat that they had into their bargaining agreements and the way the contracts were written. All of that's going by the wayside. So, I'm telling you as your representative, we have got to fix this. We cannot push this thing off anymore, because it's too much of a burden on my city where I live, Prescott. Fortunately, Prescott Valley's in a much better situation, because they have a younger force, a lot of reasons that they're in a better position than Prescott is, but, and Flagstaff is upside down, too. So, I go to Karen all the time on this issue, because she was going to be the leader in the House that brought this forward. And I wish it had been that way, because we need real leadership on this. We need the governor, and we need everybody to come together so we can try to put this thing together for the people of Arizona and the taxpayers of this state.
Karen, any comments?
No.
Any questions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention, I think our system that we utilize is self-funded, I believe. And it might be interesting just to kind of give a short, brief overview of what that consists of.
Well, I think what you're referencing is the general employee population, as opposed to public safety retirees, i.e. police officers. If we had a fire department, they also would be on the public safety retirement system. Our general employees are on a 401K style, meaning a defined contribution program, as opposed to a defined benefit program. As a result, our legacy costs are very small. And the contributions that are made by existing employees into that defined contribution system, it's very clear what it is. They're responsible, but they also have full control over that system. And in terms of the long-range exposure that the citizens of the town of Prescott Valley have for their general employees, it's de minimis. We have no unfunded pension costs for our general employees, only the police department. And that number, as we were talking about earlier, is a very small number because of our force being very young. And I'm not talking about the age of the officers. I'm talking about a force that was started in 1978. So, compared to cities that have been around for 100 years or 120 years, you know, we're relatively young.
Good. Any other comments?
Just one more comment. When this agreement comes, we're dealing with three groups of people. We're dealing with retirees, we're dealing with active employees, and we're dealing with new hires. The new hires are going to come under a completely different plan. They're going to be a defined contributions plan, somewhat like a 401K. It's going to include, for those entities that don't have Social Security, there'll be a Social Security component. There's a whole new retirement plan coming for new hires, which is much more stringent. And, and that's just how it's going to be. For the retirees and the present employees, you have to remember, they're under a contract. Their contract was let with the city of Prescott, or Prescott Valley, and these contractual obligations spell out the obligations of the city. You can't break these contracts. So, the only thing that can break these contracts is if the cities go bankrupt. And they don't want that, and we don't want that. So, good things are coming with this. I mean, it's, but it's going to take 18 to 20 years to get this fund up. But that's a short time when you're dealing with a pension system. It's a very short time. But we're bottomed out, the fund is growing, the economy's doing better, and the bad investments that were made, can't do anything about that, but, but better times are ahead.
Laura?
Do you have any information on the matter in which whoever is controlling the investments are being, have oversight, strong oversight? Because that's part of the problem that, where we are today. There was no oversight in the investing of these funds. Is this an area that we're going to be protecting our officers and our firefighters?
Right now, the governance issue is not settled. The nuts and bolts of the agreement, who's giving up what, how long you're going to work, that's pretty much all agreed to. What they're now discussing is, the board, we have a present board of seven members. They want to increase that board to nine members. The League of Cities and Towns wants each board member to be an expert in the investment field and have no contact with law enforcement, or firefighters, or government, to be completely independent board. That's what the League of Cities and Towns is pushing. I'm here to tell you that it's probably not going to happen, because the PSPRS people, the firefighters and law enforcement, they want four positions on that board. They want to protect themselves, and, you know, that's understandable. The other four positions will represent the taxpayers, with the chairman of the board hopefully being the deciding vote, representing an independent voice on the board. But there's, the governance issue is, gets to the investment. They never got on top of the investments. They made bad investments, and they doubled down. And we lost billions of dollars in the fund and the market. Hopefully, with more knowledgeable people on the board, and hopefully, there will be experts in the field of investment. The recommendation that I heard was that if the firefighters put forward four people for the board, they have to be recognized experts in that field. They can represent the firefighters, but they have to have a certain knowledge of about investment and managing a fund like that. And that would apply to the four taxpayer representatives. So, but right now, there's been no agreement on the governance of the board.
But any other questions? Any other questions, comments? Anyone else, Karen?
My own thinking on this is that you are both on right track on every issue we discussed tonight. It kind of puzzles me that legislators want to introduce twelve or fifteen hundred bills a year. I wish they would introduce twelve or fifteen hundred bills to reduce the garbage they put in the path. It's, I don't know why we need hundreds of new bills every year. It seems like we're already overwhelmed with stuff in our law. Anything else you want to add then? Larry, do you have any comments?
Nothing other than to say thank you. I know it's not easy down there and certainly keep up the good work beating back the interests that are different than our own. And, you know, strange things that come out of left field that would take away some of the discretion of cities and towns. There's no business with any of that. And so thank you for protecting us.
And I'd like to thank you as well and also tell you that we're really glad we have you two folks on compared to what I've seen in some of the other districts. You're doing a great job, both of you. You're both on track.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to say one thing. I know it's getting a little deep in here, but I have to say this from my heart that Noel and Steve and I are so lucky, and I mean this sincerely, to have the mayors and councils and cities that we work with and towns. It is amazing how many legislators down there have never met their council people or mayors. They don't know who they are. They don't go to council meetings. It just blows me away. But we are so lucky because we know all of our mayors, all of our council people, we all go to ballgames together and, you know, we meet together, we talk together all the time. And quite honestly, we're the lucky ones because we have you guys and, you know, you're not just our working partners, you're our friends.
Karen, I'm glad you commented. There's six council people I work with are just super. We've got outstanding. And we have, thankfully, outstanding legislators. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it and just keep up the good work. And if we can help you, let us know. We're on your side. We got your phone number, we got your email address, we got your capital address, whatever else we need. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to number four, discussion artist contract. Brian?
Before I begin, I'd like to thank our volunteer selection committee members that were part of this project. Mr. Leland Morris from the Prescott Valley Art Guild, Ms. Janet Payne, local artist, Ms. Jean Anne Quinn, retired arts professor, and Ms. Cindy Welch, Prescott art docent. These folks reviewed, evaluated, and ranked the Statement of Qualifications in cooperation with their Art and Culture Commission members in going through this project. So a deep thanks to them, the staff, and everyone else that was participating here. Our discussion for this evening surrounds the Lake Shore Drive Widening Project, which is approved for the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. And this project includes the funding for a Civic Center complex entry sculpture as a portion of the new expansion. The sculptures be located at the northeast corner of Lake Shore Drive and Civic Circle. Now, back in October of two thousand and fifteen, staff sent out notices for Statements of Qualifications for Professional Artistic Services for the design and build of an entryway sculpture. This notice sought an artist with the capacity, experience, and vision that would reflect the culture, history, people, and values of our community while also being compatible with the Civic Center complex and the multi-lane intersection. Twenty-eight statements of qualification from throughout the country were received on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, in accordance with the request. Over a five-week period, the selection committee and the Arts and Culture Commission conducted a multi-tiered jury of the submissions. This process also included a public introduction of the project and its top three candidates via an opinion poll shared via the way of social media and local radio. Based upon the Statement of Qualifications, the selection committee determined that Mr. Stephen Kishel of Bluffton, South Carolina, to be the most qualified candidate for the project. Mr. Kishel's marquette demonstrates the concept of his public sculpture, whose dimension consists of eight-foot diameter by twenty-six feet in height and will be constructed of steel pipe and colorized sculpted aluminum. Mr. Kishel's vision for the project sees the Civic Center representing the aspirations of a major city to provide more than life's necessities for its citizens. It provides culture, ongoing education, and entertainment that refreshes. The public sculpture will be a dynamic and structured, bold yet sophisticated, and tastefully colored with a southwestern flair. The sculpture will identify the Civic Center with the arts and the interest of the people of Prescott Valley, as well as provide an attractive addition for the visitors of the Mr. Kishel's previous commission works can be found at Great Plains Hospital in North Platte, Nebraska, the HGTV Jacksonville Beach Smart House in Jacksonville, Florida, the Resurgent Park in Atlanta, Georgia, the Mill District in Minneapolis, Minnesota, Cedarwood Architectural in Cleveland, Ohio, the Bravren Shopping Center, which happens to be Microsoft Towers in Bellevue, Washington, Windward Shopping Center in Alpharetta, Georgia, and Adrian's Insurance Corporation of Ontario, California. Before you, there's an illustration that provides the site elevation references as it relates to the sculpture and its surrounding components. You'll see reference to the far left is a six-foot individual. Then adjacent to that is the thirty-foot light pole that's currently existing at that intersection. Adjacent to that is the recommended sculpture for your consideration, which again is twenty-six feet in height. Behind that will be located the complex entry sign at a maximum height of six feet. And then background reference is the library entrance roof, which is at thirty-one feet, and then the auditorium cone at a maximum height of seventy feet. Also for your reference is the Civic Center entry sign and sculpture placement. The red dot represents the existing light pole. The blue dot would represent the placement of the sculpture itself. And the green bar represents the monument sign location. I believe all of these items have been presented to you by Mr. Davis in review of the project of the street widening. Ultimately, our next step would be to initiate contract negotiations for substantial completion of services that would be rendered no later than June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, call upon Mr. Davis, Ms. Kim Moon, or we have, in addition to that, two members of our Art and Culture Commission that were also part of that selection in providing you with the recommendation tonight.
Vice Mayor?
I was going to recommend that you introduce the two members of the committee that are here.
Yes, sir. Be happy to do that. Tonight, we have with us Ms. Nancy Smith and Ms. Suzanne Duskey.
Thank you for your work.
Other comments? Steve?
I do have a couple of comments. First off, I wanted to say thank you to you guys and girls for putting this together. Secondly, though, is less than, or about a month ago, we voted to raise taxes in the town. We told the people that we were so broke that we didn't have money for police or to fix the roads. And this isn't on you. I'm just trying to put it out there for the rest of the council. So the ink hasn't even really dried on the tax raise yet, and now we're going to go spend ninety thousand dollars on a sculpture? It just doesn't make sense to me. And even though it was in the budget already, we could scrap it and put something else in the budget. That's just my way of thanking for this.
Larry?
If I could respond to that, it's very important to understand that this was dialed in, this expenditure was dialed in to be the feature on the inside of a roundabout. This was designed three years ago. Okay? That was during the height of the recession, but it is consistent with what council has said for the last twenty-five years. And I'm talking scores of council people and a handful of mayors. And that is, we will incorporate art in public works projects, and we insist that art be incorporated in public works process, projects. But we will not do what some cities have done. And that is, there are some cities in the state of Arizona and across the country that say that one percent or two percent of every public works project will be dedicated to art. And our council said, no, we're not going to put in a threshold like that because when we end up having a twenty-million-dollar renovation of the wastewater treatment plant, that's one hell of a lot of money set aside for art. But what we will insist on is art be included in public works projects. Not everyone, but there will be a percentage where we want to see that. That has been the case for twenty years. That's the genesis of this particular project. It was going to be in the middle of a roundabout. The roundabout went away because of property ownership and long-term traffic decisions, and it was moved to this corner. So this was something that was budgeted for and a long history of dedication to art.
Mike, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering on the renderings we've seen from the, I guess, the creator.
Yes.
Are the colors of that piece going to be something that the committee decides or the person creating that decides? Or how will that be?
It'll be an interactive and negotiated process that we will go through.
Because I think it's big enough and I guess it's not going to cover our sign. You can see through it and...
Actually, the artwork itself, and again, as we were referencing, the piece itself will stand about twenty-six feet tall. The artist has also recognized the simple fact that this piece will have to be elevated, i.e. from the standpoint of the, we do not want them climbing up and around and through the piece. So literally, that will be raised approximately ten to twelve feet above grade with all of that artwork. So we'll be going through that process as well. So there will be no blockage of the sign other than the three to four vertical posts that will suspend all of that.
Okay, right. Well, I agree. I think the perspective, my perspective anyway, relative to the art in our community in the town of Prescott Valley is that we incorporate that in any way we can. And I'm not sure how we can equate this versus anything else we do in the town in terms of budgeting that would reflect, you know, the fact that we are looking for support relative to public safety and roads. And I think it's pretty clear. And this does tie in, I think, from the standpoint of safety and roads. And I look forward to getting more information about it in the near future.
Do you have another comment, Steve?
Yes, I do. I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not saying, don't do it. I'm saying, let's get our stuff in order and then do it. I just don't see how we could vote to spend ninety thousand dollars on a sculpture a month after we voted to raise the taxes on the people that live here. That's all I'm saying.
Any other comments, anyone? Anything else, Larry? Anything else, Brian?
No, sir.
And I take it you're going to be bringing this back to us?
Yes, sir. We'll have that before you in regards to your direction, in regards to approval of that agreement.
No more questions? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, we move on to number five, Viewpoint Drive Flood Plane Channelization Project. Norm?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you do have for you tonight is a contract award for the Viewpoint Flood Plane Channelization. This particular project may look a little familiar to you because back in September, we did award a design contract, a line engineering to finish one-hundred-percent plans. We've studied this entire corridor. Let me back up a little bit. Get to the beginning here. Here's the Viewpoint Channelization Project. Council, maybe we're back in September. We were successful with getting a grant from the Flood Control District. It's a yearly disbursement of funding for stormwater management projects. So we did start the designing of this project. We did have one-hundred-percent plans, and what we've moved forward with is actually moving towards construction of what we would call Phase One, as you can see on the project sign that will be installed here in a couple of weeks. But you can see this exhibit up here does talk about the channelization project basically between Spouse and Manley along Viewpoint Drive. Council, maybe recall this past summer, we had two occurrences of inundation of Manley Drive where residents couldn't get home for a couple hours. So this is one of the worthy stormwater management projects that we've had focus and long-term vision in order to see to construction. So funding-wise, we do have available funding this year to move forward with Phase One. If I can help the council a little bit, if you look in the top of the exhibit where it says Phase One and the funding, really what it does is put pipes installed there at that particular crossing in a phased approach. And we will move forward. If funding becomes available in subsequent budget years, we'll continue on with the channelization up towards Spouse. So this is a phased approach. These other details show a little bit about the particular project. This is how the project exists today. We've got a couple thirty-six-inch pipes. There's one on one side of the road and on the east side of the road here at Manley. This is a picture of Manley where this Phase One will take place. And this particular, I don't know if I'd call this a, it's a rendering we did in-house. Actually, give kudos to Heidi. She helped us do some photoshopping here, so we didn't spend a lot of time with it. But there's actually going to be seven pipes, and we couldn't get Heidi count to seven, but we got six in there. But it'll give you an idea that we're going to put seven sixty-inch pipes. So as I mentioned, we have four thirty-six-inch pipes. So basically, we're doubling the pipe size and also the number of pipes, which will give you an idea of what that hundred-year storm can be in there and why we get inundation in a particular time. So we worked hard on this particular rendition, just to give you an idea. The other thing I'd like to point at the council, what we've done here in Prescott Valley was we've kind of softened the look of some of these big drainageways. What's important is a lot of these particular drainage crossings, you can see handrail put up with vertical walls. We worked hard with the engineer and actually, one of our particular design-type standards is to soften that look with, you know, sloped access in the particular drainageway. So engineeringally, the hydraulics works very well, but aesthetically, I think it's a much more pleasing appearance. It's not quite as harsh with the handrails and the vertical faces. So you'll see, actually, the Lake Shore project going on right now, you'll see in the coming months, this particular application of the mitered-end sections on the pipes. In fact, this Photoshop is actually a picture of the Long Look project we did here a couple years ago. So we just took and photoshopped that in, and it's a good standard that we are employing. And I think it'll be well-received. One thing I did want to mention, too, of course, Supervisor Jack Smith is here tonight, and I just, of course, wanted to call attention, if he would like to speak at all, but the Flood Control District did make this project into reality, and we make application every year. And Jack's a very big advocate for the residents of town of Prescott Valley to see worthy stormwater management projects come into place. So I think one of my first slides was, we always like to call attention to funding source of projects to make sure, you've heard me present before, we have different funding sources. Well, Yavapai Flood Control District is basically, this project wouldn't really be here tonight for recommendation for award without the Flood Control District dollars. We have had design funds so far, and we're looking forward to now is starting construction. Let me go back to, as always, we're going to see quite a bit of construction. I always like to point out to council that we do like to pass out to the area residents a little, the same exhibits you see, to let residents know what is anticipated and what they can expect through this whole quarter, because this would be a phased approach. So we'll hand this out to residents and basically just tell us a little about the funding source and also stormwater management improvements. So hopefully, they'll see improvements in that particular area. I guess getting to the matter at hand, we did send us Phase One out for contractor bid, and we did get great interest from the contract community. We had eleven bids come in and well within the engineering estimate and come in very favorably. A contract, a local contract from the Verde Valley called Alliance Street Works was the low at three hundred and eighty thousand, and that's well within budget. So we're confident we can move forward this Phase One construction. And we really look forward to move forward with this within the next coming months and actually having it done by the springtime. With that, I'd like to invite Supervisor Jack Smith, would like to make any comments or answer any questions that council may have at this time.
I'm Supervisor Jack Smith. I'm chairman of the board for the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors. Again, I'm honored to be up here in front of you. The only thing I... The only thing I can assure you is, we've reviewed this project in the many phases, and as far as I'm concerned, we will continue to fund this project until its completion, and that's on the record. So if you have any other questions, feel free to answer them.
Questions, Larry?
Yeah, not a question, but would like to thank Jack for his continued support of us getting flood control money, which is actually an assessment on your property tax that we pay in Yavapai County Flood Control. And I'm very proud of the fact that we have been consistent in being awarded grant dollars coming back to Prescott Valley, and that's a hats off to Jack and the board, as well as to the Public Works Department for going ahead and consistently putting in grants and concluding projects, which I understand other places have a rough time with. We don't have a rough time making improvements to our community, we get them done. In addition to that, I would like to thank Jack for some very recent movement on some joint projects on Sunset and some design work that is going on, and that's at our supervisor's direction, as well as some traffic control on Fane Road and Sarah Jane. And Jack, thank you very much for that, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. And again, we have an awesome relationship, and I, you know, put you guys up against any council, quite honestly, because you get in here, you get it done. The projects, like you said, you have an amazing public works guy behind me, sitting behind me, Norm. He gets a project in his mind, he gets it done right, and he gets it done on budget. He comes to us with every single detail, we iron it out, and that's what you see. Big bang for your buck. So, great job all the way around. Larry, awesome job, appreciate the help.
Good. Any questions?
Come on, one. Not you.
Thank you, got a question?
No, I just wanted to agree, we appreciate your support, and I'm trying to think of the number of projects we've had that's assisted us in reducing the flood-prone areas that we have in Prescott Valley. So we do appreciate your support and your help.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments? Jack, we appreciate that. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further things, we got to go to the one item everybody hates. Some more comments, Norm?
No, I was just going to clear things off, Mayor, and let you know we'll bring it back next week for voting, and it'll work.
If there's no other comments, we go to number six, I know everybody hates that. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.